Thank you much.
Good morning and welcome to a special meeting of Harden County Commissioners Court. Today is Tuesday, January the nineteenth, and it's ten a.m. The meeting will be called to order. This time, if everybody will please rise for the invocation by Commissioner Kirkendall and remain standing for the pledge.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Lord, we thank you for the honor and the privilege of representing our constituents on Commissioners Court. We pray for wisdom and guidance today, God. Lord, we lift up our county employees. We pray blessings upon them and their families, Lord. Father, we pray today, God, that, Lord, you just keep us safe, keep our Sheriff's Department safe, Lord, keep our DPS and officers safe. Pray that you build our military and our government today in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Commissioner.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item number four, provide update on cost of annex building project and discuss financing options. Commissioner Pell did ask that we put this on the agenda for today for discussion, and I believe Commissioner Cooper has some updated information to provide with the court.
Thank you, Judge. I did receive a recent email from Mr. Greg Wall with LaBeach Architect. The proposal that we have going through right now on the, on the annex project, it stands just a little over ten thousand square feet, and the total price is going to be between one point six and one point seven million. The judge and I, along with representatives from the architectural firm, met with all the department heads, and we pretty much got it narrowed down on a floor plan to where everybody is in agreeance to what they would accept on that. Of course, you know, there were some that, that wanted a little more, but we had to cut back to get it to where we're at, and I think we're at a, at a point now that we can, everybody can work together and, and go forward with this.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Pell, I know you were concerned about the, the interest rates increasing, and you'd asked if I could get Mr. Gilli to come, and he's here today. Would you like to get him to go ahead and speak, or do you have any specific questions you'd like for him to address?
I would ju- just like to comment that the reason that I have concern in not going ahead and doing something on this project is that the Federal Reserve, which is, people may or may not know, they brought the discount rate down to zero shortly after two thousand eight election day in two thousand nine, and they've held it at zero for many years now, but they have announced their intention to take it back to a target of somewhere as two to three percent, which is where typically the discount rate has been, except in inflationary times and or recession times. And they've already made one move of a quarter percent, and they've announced for this year that in three to five moves, they would like to take it back to at least two percent. And this is where my question is, when we add two percent, or one, each quarter percent on, let's say, one point seven million dollars, how many dollars would that add to the cost of this bond issue? And then when we ultimately get to two percent, a cumulative of how many dollars we would have had to add to it? I did some rough figures, but, you know, I, I would like to hear y'all's thoughts on it.
Morning, Mr. Gilli.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Pleasure to be here. Thank you very much. I'm Jim Gilli with U.S. Capital Advisors. The, nobody really knows what the Fed is going to do, but they've announced, as Commissioner Pell said, that they intend to raise rates over the coming months, and most market analysts believe they have limited ability to really do much. The, but, you know, watching the Federal Open Market Committee minutes in the coming months will give us a clue as to what their intentions are. Most experts in the fixed income market think that rates will generally trend higher. The, the problem is, is that when the Fed changes rates, most of that, the time, that happens in the shorter end of the yield curve, and the market is pretty smart, and, and what, but there, and market is generally not real optimistic over the long term about what's happening, because there's a lot of, we were speaking before the meeting, that there is a considerable concern of another recession. But I think most market experts believe that rates are going, are trending higher, and if they are about, you know, if you were to hold an election this year and sell at the latter part of the year, many market experts thinks rates could be twenty to fifty basis points higher, twenty-five to fifty basis points higher. If they went fifty basis points higher on a million seven, over twenty years, that'd be roughly a hundred thousand dollars in, in additional cost. On a, and, on a, that's, that move would be about four to four and a half percent on your interest cost, on your amortization payments each year, meaning the principal plus interest. So that, that will give you some order of magnitude of what the cost would be versus today. But having said that, nobody really knows what's going to happen. There's so much concern and uncertainty. The stock market is reflecting, I think, the, the, the concern about a worldwide recession, and oil prices are so low, you'd think, well, that should be really stimulative, which tells me, and it's not at this time, of course, and, and people would argue, say, well, there's so much glut in the market, oil market, and the, and it's being artificially affected by OPEC pumping oil and, and, but there is a lot, excess supply, which is, is reason for the price, apparently for the prices being so low. But the concern I have, and I think a lot of people have, is that that low price should be very stimulative to the economies of the world, and it's not happening, and the, and the mark, stock market indicates what the thinking is about the future. And at, at this point, it's not very optimistic. And one last thing I'll say, I heard a report on the way over here today on Bloomberg Radio, which is a business channel, and there, there was a fellow who was, an economist who was concerned that he foresees a, what happened in the seventies, where there's a stagflation, where we had kind of lethargic growth and high inflation. Hopefully, we don't have that, but that's about the best I can offer at this point, and hopefully you don't have any ques- hopefully you have no questions, and that'll be hard for me to answer, so.
Well, the only question I have, unless Mr. Pell has something, is the one hundred thousand that you said over twenty years, is that kind of what you see as a worst-case scenario, if we wait till the end of the year?
At this point, that's, that's our best estimate of the worst case. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Having said that, again, the municipal market is reflective of the general market rates, but it, if you're selling bank-qualified paper, meaning an issue under ten million dollars, that, that there, banks need that, they, they get a tax break when they buy a bank-qualified issue, and I can explain to you, a bank-qualified and how you designate that as a court, but that means you can't issue more than ten million dollars in one calendar year, and I wouldn't expect that that would be the case. Bank-qualified issues tend to be a little more resistant to a lot of this volatility. Doesn't mean that rates aren't going up, but in general, we see rates heading north, at least to some extent.
And just as a reminder to the audience here, the last time that we took up this subject, which I think was about three months ago, we had decided to wait until May to put the issue on the ballot as a bond election. However, Ms. Austin checked with the Secretary of State's office and the Attorney General's office and learned that we cannot put it on the, the May ballot. You can only do that in even number of years. So the earliest we could put this on the ballot would be next November, which puts us, and I think Mr. Goodson's going to explain to us that if we, if we do that, the earliest we would be able to draw any money to start building the project would probably be late in the first quarter.
Twenty seventeen, yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
As we have told the court before, when you do a general obligation bond issue, as your competent staff knows better than me, you have a contestability period that runs thirty days. So you really can't move on the, the bond issue until sometime in the early part of December of next year. Jim's the market expert. We find, though, from the bond council side, the, the markets are much less hungry in that very end, so you're probably looking at doing this marketing a little over, or about a year from now, and, and having money in sometime in that first quarter of twenty seventeen. The two items I mentioned on the hundred thousand, you're probably a little north of that, of that number, because the number we're giving is just for the hard costs of the actual construction. You will have, obviously, some soft costs. That's why you'd set the parameter at a not-to-exceed number that we would still be working, obviously, with the court, your finance department, your architect. And also, I know the one thing that we found in moving these projects off, some of my clients have to, because they have to get regulatory approval, which this court does not, is that the price of poker, as they say, is changing. These contract prices also have some volatility as economies change. So I cannot say what the components that Mr. LaBeach and Greg are putting together, how volatile any of those pricing structure is, but again, you're talking about getting a contractor to commit to a, I understand you're looking at the contract manager at risk and some cost where you probably have a better idea, probably in the next ninety days or so, when you could probably work towards a certificate issue. You're looking a little longer out, and so there's a little other volatility there that you might have. But again, it's a timing issue, of course, for the court, to whether, you know, you want to wait that additional twelve months plus before you have money available for your project.
God, and I'm trying to remember some of our prior conversations, either through certificates of obligation or a bond, which is, you're, you're only talking about whether voters approve of the court goes on the court. During this period, when you're waiting on the bonds to be sold, is it legal for the court to furnish its own working capital and start a project, or didn't you tell them, say something?
We, we can undertake what the Internal Revenue Code calls a reimbursement resolution, where you would say, and I'm just picking a number, because it was the number we talked about before, two million dollars. You, you said, we're going to issue up to two million dollars for hard and soft costs, start demolition. You, so, so you want to start under construction even before the CO monies in the bank. That allows you to go back sixty days prior to the date of that resolution and start picking up hard costs, cost to Mr. Gilli and me, your architect, engineer. That's, that's not required for the reimbursement resolution, but as I say, is if you're really getting down to turning dirt, doing a demo project, doing site work, where you're getting some smaller contractors that may not be under your C, your construction manager at risk, yeah, you could do that, and, and we could put that reimbursement resolution in place, and can have that to the court just whenever you all want us to have it and pull the trigger.
Yes, I guess what we're really talking about is that if the court, say in February, issued certificates of obligation to go ahead and, or voted to pursue certificates of obligation versus waiting until November for a, an election, then probably there's about something like nine months that we could gain on this project.
Just about.
Yeah.
You're probably looking, Jim, probably in the first, middle of the second quarter. There's, remember, after you all approved the reimbursement resolution, we have a notice that has to go up for the public that is published in your newspapers of general circulation. It says, this county plans on doing this project and funding it with tax-supported debt, just like your GO bond in November would be, and you'd, you have a thirty-day period before you can adopt an order after that notice period. So there's a window there, so you're right, Commissioner. We couldn't be selling in November, but we'd be sometime a little later in that third, first quarter of this year, probably pricing this thing and moving for a, a closing within thirty days thereafter.
You can probably have one in the back in, in the late spring.
Okay. The, the court has already made the decision to do the project, haven't we?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. So all we're discussing, the only, only decision, decision left to make is whether we go certificates of obligation or a bond election. That, that's what we're looking at.
Yeah. And, and again, I, I don't want to take anything away from ballot propositions. We do a lot of those for a lot of clients, but as the court, I think we also go, kind of retracing it, something we mentioned is due to some recent legislation, if you do a GO issue and it fails, then you cannot do COs for a period of three years thereafter. So it's, you, you're sort of cut off from your funding source by the COs. You're going to have to wait to conduct another GO bond election if it would be unsuccessful in November. So it's the pleasure of the court on how you feel best to attack the problem. I know it's important for you all to get this matter resolved, and we'll be happy to follow whatever lead you all give us.
I, I don't think there would be any interest, any intent or any heart on this court, if we did a bond election and it failed, to come back and try to do certificates of obligation. I mean, I, I don't see this court ever engaging in something like that.
No, well.
You know, trying to go against the will of the people.
Absolutely.
And it's for this reason that we did six public hearings on this thing, to educate the people and get feedback and stuff like this. And I think I was involved in three of them, and the feedback that we got in these, the meetings that I attended and helped hold, was that the public was totally behind it. We had no opposition to doing this project, and in fact, in the one community that I thought might be against it, they were holdhardly for it and thought we should go ahead and do it as soon as possible before interest rates started up and construction costs go up. Now, anyone that has any understanding of, of economies understands that where we are today in this country, in this world, is very, very, very uncertain, and it has fooled the exports, the, the experts. The oil prices have fooled the experts. But what the experts don't understand, that everyone doesn't live like Wall Street does. Wall Street has lived off five trillion dollars of publicly printed money, but everybody's not living off public printed money today. And the great middle class, we just had statistics to show that it has shrunk in the last ten years by something like twenty-eight percent. So we have a dynamics going on in this country that is different than anything we have seen in many, many years, but that being said, and all of this was talked, especially in one of the meetings I was in, the people felt that we should go ahead, we need the project, it's, it's a project that we need to serve the people of this county, and their thoughts were we should go ahead and do it. So I take that, that, you know, we do have a public behind us if we decide to issue certificates of obligation, but this court, I don't believe would ever go against the will of the people.
We, we just want to go through the procedure so that the citizens as well all know what options the county has available to it.
But I guess my final question is, and the, the judge and Commissioner Cooper probably have, right now, we have people in, spread out in different places, and I guess we're even looking for places to put people.
We have locations for two of the offices to move to. They're just in the process of moving.
So we do have an expense that during the interim, until we get a new building, that whatever will be added to the bond issue, hundred thousand plus or minus, or whatever it is, we know we're going to have additional, the county's going to incur additional expenses to house these different apartments until we do get a new building built. I don't know what that would be, fifty, hundred thousand dollars, or, or say, a nine-month period?
We haven't figured it out, but it's, you're probably in the ballpark.
Yeah, it's, it's so, so, plus the inconvenience, we're also incurring costs by any delays on getting this thing started. So I, I mean, I think there's a lot of things, but the main thing is, in my mind, is serving the people from one location. We know we're going to build it. We know we have to build it. We're not going to remodel the old hospital. So the sooner we get on it, if we've got public support, and I believe we do have public support, the sooner we get on it, the better we have spent the people's tax dollars. And now, with that being said, if this court made the decision, say in February, to go certificates of obligation, when would we be ready to start construction, assuming that we have the working capital to get it started, and we have the proper language in the bond contract, or whatever you want to call it, to get reimbursed for those costs?
Yes, sir.
Because we, we don't want to fund it out of the, out of our savings. But when would be the earliest that we could start that project?
Well, again, from whatever court session you have us present the reimbursement resolution and the notice, from that date, there's thirty days that have to expire prior to the time that you can adopt an order. Well, the thirty days never makes it hit exactly with y'all's court sessions, so you're probably about, let's say, six weeks there or so, perhaps between two court sessions, to, to get an order presented, then I think, Mr. Gilli, what, about sixty days from the time that we adopt an order, that we could probably have funds with your escrow for, for the project. And then, then after that, it's whenever the contract provides for the notice to proceed, to allow them to, the contractor to really start turning dirt beyond maybe the demolition work. So again, you're probably.
If the ordinance, order could be adopted in April, then you'd want a commitment for the certificates from a purchaser before you proceeded, because if not, there's opportunity that the certificates may not proceed.
Right.
Okay. Along with what you said a while ago about banks and the other ten million and all of this, do you foresee any, any possibility that the certificates would be hard to sell, being a government entity? I would think they'd be pretty choice right now.
Yes, sir.
The fact that they're tax-exempt, and the fact that you've got tax power behind them.
Your credit is for the county and your financials are very good.
Yeah, so, so they, these, these should be, in, in a, two million dollars should be very easy to sell, I would think, in the uncertainty of where we are today with corporate bonds and things like this.
Yes, sir.
They'd be very attractive.
I think they would be, very, very attractive.
Yeah, they're very attractive.
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all the questions I have, Jeff.
Thank you, Mr. Pell. Any other commissioners have any questions for Mr. Goodson or Mr. Gilli?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Any other comments regarding this subject?
I just, I'm, I'm, I've heard from constituents, and I'm firmly set on a bond. I'm not going to change that. I just think the members of the court need to know that, that November's going to be a big election, a lot of voter, voter turnout, and, and we will get to know overwhelmingly whether or not they support it. We had no opposition in the public hearings, but they were very thinly attended, and some, no one outside the courthouse showed up. The one that I attended, it was only employees of the courthouse that showed up, nobody from the general public. And so I have been asked by the citizens that I represent to let them have a say, and so that, I'm firmly committed to that, so I would not be for certificate of obligation.
This is probably hard to believe, but this is one issue that I agree with Commissioner Kirkendall on. So when it comes to a vote, I'll be voting for a, a bond election as well.
All right. Anything further? Thank you both very much. Item number five, discuss and possibly approve the reappointment of Commissioner L.W. Cooper, Jr., primary voting member, and Commissioner Alvin Roberts, alternate member to the Jefferson Orange Harden Regional Transportation Study, Transportation Planning Committee for fiscal year 2016. Commissioner Cooper, will you agree to serve as the primary member again for a year on that committee?
Yes.
And Commissioner Roberts, will you agree to serve as an alternate member?
So moved.
Second.
And a motion by Commissioner Pell, and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number six, discussion and possible action to accept notice from Felice's Bistro regarding closure of the cafe effective February the fourth, two thousand sixteen.
Judge, I see that they have asked to have a meeting with you, I guess, and, or with the court to.
Yes, sir. They requested to meet with me, and I've attempted to meet with them three times, but they've not been available, so, but we have not met yet.
I, I would move that we table this until we can have a meeting and kind of see where, where they are in the equipment and all the things that are in there as to what might be, could worked out, because I think that we need to do that step before we would do the next item on the agenda, so that when we go out for proposals, we would know what was going to be left and what wasn't going to be left.
Second.
And I'd move we table it.
Have a motion by Commissioner Pell to table item number six, and a second by Commissioner Cooper. Any further discussion?
I have some. I talked with Doris this morning. She's got surgery planned for February, so they're planning to be out of here. That it, we, if, if it's not closed, then there will, there will not be anybody here, and I don't know what her recovery will be in order to allow us to move forward, so.
I, I think we need to meet as soon as we can, before she would go into surgery and, you know, so we can see what their, what their thoughts are on the equipment, everything they.
Okay. And then my, my other question would be to Rebecca, if they've served us on January the eighth, and we table it, are we still good with this date, or does it become, does the thirty days become effective from whatever date we pick it back up?
I would say it depends on what we put in their contract, which I have not reviewed.
I think it says after they give us notice, and, and I did receive notice on January the eighth, so I don't, I don't think tabling it will postpone them posing on the fourth. They're going to pose on the fourth regardless.
Okay.
Anything else? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any mo, any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. So item number seven, Misty Whitney Purchasing Agent Authorization to Advertise for Request for Proposals for Vendor to Occupy and Operate Courthouse Cafe.
Move we table?
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper, and a second by Commissioner Pell to table item number seven. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number eight, discussion and possible action to post signage related to Texas Penal Code, Section thirty dot zero six and/or thirty dot oh seven and/or forty dot oh three with regards to concealed and/or openly carried firearms in the courthouse. This is an item that we've discussed, and we had a public meeting on January the eighth. We had, some people are here today that attended that meeting. We had Representative White here who spoke. I think Commissioner Pell had a question on what the intent of the legislature was. Mr. White, did I call him Commissioner White? Representative White.
Representative White.
Sorry about that. Spoke to us and told us that the intent of the legislature is that on, in courthouses such as ours, it's a multi-use facility, that they intended for those who were licensed to carry permit holders to, excuse me, be able to carry their weapons in the courthouse. Rebecca's done an extensive amount of research into this, and I want to thank her for that, our county attorney, and this time I would just like to know what the pleasure of the court is going forward on posting the signage.
I would like to say thank you as well to our county attorney, because she has worked hard on it. I've had a couple of meetings myself with her. As far as the open carry or concealed carry, or I'm all for Second Amendment rights. I just don't feel like that the courthouse is a place for anyone other than law enforcement to carry firearms, and of course, we've disagreed on that, and I think we need to, as a court, get this matter behind us and, and move on, but I just want to know for the, let it be known for the record, I am for people's Second Amendment rights. I have guns myself, and, and I'm, I'm for that. I just don't think that the courthouse is a place, because I'm concerned about the safety of our employees as well as others. I just don't think it's a place for any type of weapons other than law enforcement.
Thank you, Commissioner Cooper. Any other commissioner?
I, I'm going to second what Commissioner Cooper said. I could say ditto, because I would have said the exact same thing. I, I totally agree with Commissioner Cooper, and that's all, about all I have to say about it.
Thank you. Any other commissioner would like to address this item before we take any action?
Well, I would, would like, is Rebecca going to propose that she has?
She's here to answer any questions that we have.
My, my only general thought is, and I can agree with the concern that Commissioner Cooper and Commissioner Roberts has, but that is not the point here. The point here is that the state, the legislature of the state of Texas and the governor of the state of Texas has signed the bill, and I, everything that I've heard here was the same thing that was heard up in the legislature by our legislators, and I've assumed the governor, and yet, in their wisdom, they passed the law. And it's a matter of abiding by the law. It's not a matter of what we think, because we're not, not in the legislature. We operate on the laws of the state of Texas as a subsidiary of the state of Texas, or as any private business or individual does. So I'm anxious to hear what Rebecca says. So, I'm anxious to hear what, uh, Rebecca says.
Well, I don't feel comfortable giving a recommendation, I can tell you that, um.
Options.
Options.
That's a better word, I ta- I take recommendations back.
Oh, good. Uh, as you know, thirty point oh six and thirty point oh seven are our penal code trespass statutes. Thirty point oh six, uh, specifically deals with, uh, the concealed weapon, and thirty point oh seven is your open carry, uh, trespass statute. Uh, forty thr- what is it, forty-six point oh three, uh, covers, um, where, uh, what buildings or locations you cannot bring in certain weapons, whether it be a handgun or, or some other weapon designated in, uh, forty-six point oh five. So, um, the issue for liability purposes comes from government code, and that's chapter four eleven point two oh nine, which specifically speaks to thirty point oh six, which is your concealed. So, you gentlemen have had an opportunity to take a look at that. For whatever reason, um, it does not mention thirty point oh seven. All right, that is the statute where I think Mr. Holcomb was speaking about him filing, uh, complaints against counties, and potentially filing a complaint against Harden County. So that if we posted a thirty point oh six sign, uh, indicating that the entire building was off limits, then he would file a complaint under four eleven point two oh nine under that one. Uh, any citizen has the right to file that complaint, it then goes into the hands basically of the Attorney General's office, they would come and work with us. And if we chose ultimately not to remove those signs, then we could be facing civil liability. And that is really where we've come, I have kind of looked at it. So, um, I have sought guidance from many counties who have handled this issue so far this year. Um, specifically, one of the issues that has been addressed by many of those counties is a designation of what the premises is. What's the premises of the courtroom and the offices utilized by those courts. And many counties across the state of Texas have taken it upon themselves to have their, uh, county judges, their commissioner court, uh, judges of their commissioner courts, their probate court judges, their JPs, their district judges, who, um, have offices in these buildings or satellite buildings. And, uh, many counties have had those offices designate where, um, what they believe are, uh, their courtrooms and their offices that are utilized by them. And then many courts have adopted those findings and found, uh, that, that that was a basis for banning guns, whether it's concealed or open carry in an entire building. So, there's several different options there, I don't necessarily think you have to post a forty-six one oh three sign, because that's just a recitation of the statute. And it's, a person violates it whether we post that sign or not. So, I think you're really looking, but I will back up and say this, there are counties who are posting that sign anyway. So, I think you're looking at whether or not you want to, um, pu- post a thirty point oh six sign, or a thirty point oh seven sign? Or both? And then do you want to define those premises which would require the, um, help of those judges in those other courts that I've just mentioned?
Well, I think if we post either or both of those signs, then, then, uh, even before we post them, we do have to have, uh, the judges, uh, at least the judges at, at this courthouse, uh, delineate that, uh, what they consider to be the premises of their courts, is that correct?
I believe that helps in the long run when it comes time, if you get a complaint filed against you and the Attorney General's office seeks to, um, pursue some kind of civil liability against the county, I think your designation of what those offices are and what your definition of that premise is makes a big difference at that point in time.
So, would we need the, the recommendation from the courts before taking action?
Yes, whatever we did, if we make a decision today on, on what signs we are going to post, I think the next step is going to be to have the, uh, district judges, myself and, uh, Judge Hall at the very least, and we probably need to involve the other JPs as well for their, their satellite offices to, uh, in order for them to, uh, specify exactly what the premises is for their courts, before we post any signs and before we, uh, execute any actual order. So, we don't have an order ready to execute today, cause I think we're, uh, I was hoping we could all come together on this, it doesn't really look like we are. Uh, and I hate that, but, uh, I think my recommendation is for the court, I would, uh, definitely be, uh, for posting a thirty point oh seven sign at the front door of the courthouse, not allowing any open carry anywhere in the courthouse. I also don't think that, uh, concealed carry should be allowed on the second or the third floor of the courthouse anywhere. And then, uh, as far as whether or not we allow concealed carry on, in some areas of the first floor, uh, we just have to decide what areas those would be, uh, that are not utilized by the courts. The only office that comes to mind right this moment is the tax assessor collector's office. I see Ms. Stevens is not here, but on January the eighth, when, when we had her workshop, she, uh, spoke out and said that, uh, she would not have any problem with, uh, allowing guns in her office, which we appreciate, but of course, uh, we, we have to go by what, what the law says, and the law says, and, and Mr. White told us exactly what the intent of the legisla- legislature was. And that is that, uh, and it's not real clear either, but, uh, based on my interpretation of it, we're gonna have to allow people to come in certain areas of the courthouse with, uh, concealed weapon, if they are, if they're licensed to do so. If we don't allow them to do that, we're gonna be violating four eleven dot two oh nine.
And just for the court's information, I did speak with Mr. Holcomb, that was a gentleman who came and spoke to the court and indicated that he had already filed complaints on some counties and didn't wanna make us a tenth one, I think was the comment he made. Did speak with him later on that week, he indicated that he would not be inclined, he does know I'm sure, gonna share this with the court as well. He did indicate he would not be inclined to file a complaint against Harden County if we posted a thirty point oh seven sign banning guns from the entire building, and would commend you for thinking outside of the box, he is for the safety of the employees at the county and for the citizens who come in the building. Um, he also indicated to me that he would not file a complaint if he posted a thirty point oh six, which covered the second and the thirds, third floors, third floor for sure, and he, I think, talked his way around to the second floor as well. So, his real issue, as I took from that conversation, was whether or not we posted a thirty point oh six covering the entire first floor. But he was willing to work for us, and he was the only viable complaint that may have been coming to us depending upon our action, and that's what he indicated, uh, he would be thinking based upon.
Uh, one more, and it's not to, I talked to Rebecca about this, but it's, it's, it's not to open the other part of the can of worms. Um, this courthouse is obviously used as a polling place. And I know that i- it, the law says they can't bring their weapons into a polling place, even, even under any of these circumstances, if you're concealing a gun. Are we gonna, and, and I, I think we need to find out though, are we gonna have to post a separate sign to cover those time periods when this court, courthouse is used as a polling place? What, what are we gonna do in that, in that instance? Uh, there, there, there's, there's, there's too many things we have to, to look at in allowing certain things to be done. I'm all for people and their rights, I'm all for the Second Amendment, like Commissioner Cooper stated. But there, there's, just common sense needs to be used i- in this, and I, and I keep saying that. Um, you know, I, I know that people can't carry concealed, and nobody even knows it, and I'm not, I'm not against that. But where do we draw the line, and where does, where does that line end? Uh, there's, there's gonna be things that come up all the way down the road, are we just opening it up for later on for somebody to complain about this or complain about that? Um, I, I hate it that the legislature did not, um, make their, their, their finding clear, I know some people believe it. But when you got the Attorney General of the state of Texas basically pushing it down to us to make the decision, and not really giving us any guidance, that, that's where I, you know, that's where I'm stumped. I, I know that, uh, in the long run, there's gonna be case law and, and different things that happen, and maybe even the next legislature, they'll, they'll straighten it out and get it right. But, like I said in one of the, the other meetings, this courthouse is different than any other courthouse. We're, they're all different, you may find one or two the same here and there, but all courthouses are different. And this courthouse is used as a court. Uh, the, the tax office, sure, it's, it's, uh, it's, it's right there by the front door, but that's exactly where they bring prisoners through. Uh, we just, we, we need to look at this, you know, and I, and I know we have been, but I just wanna make sure before we post anything, or we do anything, that it's gonna be right, so we don't have to revisit.
Well, to address your specific question about the polling place, that is already covered under forty-six point oh three. It is one of the locations that you cannot, um, bring a, a weapon into the building. And there's also case law that supports that, that, uh, you would not have to post a sign. So, what I'm saying is, if you wanted to give the public, uh, general knowledge that there's polling taking place on that location, you could do that. But that statute's already in place. And there have been convictions that have been upheld, that individuals came into the building of a polling location and was in a hallway, and someone would, so I think there's not the necessity, that statute's already there, and there's case law to support that the entire building would be covered under forty-six point oh three for the polling location. I don't, that, I don't think that's a big of a concern, I think there's plenty of background that goes back probably fifteen to twenty.
And to, uh, kind of expand on what Commissioner Roberts said regarding, uh, prisoners coming in and out of the front door, that's the reason I don't think we should allow open carry anywhere in the courthouse. We have prisoners coming in and out of the main door there, we have them, uh, seated in the hallway right outside the county attorney's office, uh, which is right across the hall from Ms. Gore's office, uh, we should not be allowing anyone to open carry in the courthouse, giving, uh, prisoners or, uh, any defendant access to, uh, uh, a gun that they can grab if they want to, and, and not just, not just defendants, but anybody else. People come to court to settle disputes, so, uh, not just, uh, prisoners come here, come here and get mad at, uh, whatever the judge's ruling is. Uh, probably the worst cases that I've seen, and I think the sheriff will, uh, agree to this, is, uh, it divorces in child custody disputes. That's when, uh, tempers really flare. And if we have people carrying open, not to say that, uh, a party to the lawsuit would be carrying open, but somebody else could be. And, uh, that person gets mad, they've already seen who all has a, a weapon that they can go grab and try to use that against whomever.
Well, I think the sheriff has been very, um, uh, free in, in his thought process. Having open carry in the courthouse makes his job, his security of the citizens, as well as our employees, as well as other defendants that may be in here and inmates, makes it very difficult for him, um, to uphold that part of his job as well. But I'll leave him speaking.
Thank you, Rebecca.
So, we could take action today, Judge, on what we, what route we wanna take, but as far as making an order or a resolution, we can do that at a later date?
Yes, sir.
I think, uh, unless there's other discussion, uh, if one of y'all make y'all's motion on thirty-six oh seven, I think that's probably what's gonna pass, so if we can get that done, we can go.
I would move that we would post thirty oh seven, uh, for the entire courthouse, and, uh, make the second, third floor thirty ought six and thirty ought seven, and then, uh, that would be my motion.
Second.
Can I have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, and a second by Commissioner Pelt? Yes, Mr. Roberts?
The, the, I know you're saying that on the second floor, but we also have a justice court that's on the first floor. So, we got a JP court that you're gonna allow them to.
No, I think this will come in the order, right?
Right, so they'll, they'll be banned from that area?
As I understand, Commissioner Kirkendall's motion is to post a thirty ought seven for the entire courthouse. Now, this will not cover the future annex, just the entire courthouse.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then, we're going to look, and this is, this for the second floor and third floor. And then we're gonna look at the first floor for the thirty ought six, is that what your motion is?
Yes, sir.
That's, that's second's good.
Any further discussion?
Judge?
Yes, sir.
When will y'all discuss what's gonna be, what'd be covered at the annex or allowed over there, do you have crime victims there?
I would include in my motion to cover the courthouse annex with thirty ought seven, and explore at the, uh, recommendation of the district judge and county judge of also thirty ought six at the annex, due to the crime victims being over there, so I'd like to include that in my motion.
I have a question about the motion before we vote.
Yes, sir.
Okay, are we going to ask the district judges to designate through a signed, um, not order, sign, signage from them?
Yes, sir.
Like, uh, I think it's what, what county is Waco in?
McLennan?
McLennan County. I liked what I saw there, that you know, that, uh.
I'm, I'm gonna ask that we, uh, pre- prepare something similar to that for the, uh, judges to sign.
And it, uh, can that be a part of your motion, Chris?
Well, what we'll do is we'll bring that forth at the next meeting to, uh.
Okay, okay.
Discuss that and possibly approve that order.
Okay. But I would like to see an order from those departments that are affected, um, saying that this is their desire, rather than just leaving it with the court.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I think what we'll have to do is get the district judges, uh, myself, Judge Hall for the courthouse, to come together and, and, uh, enter a finding that we submit to Commissioner's court for acceptance, and then once that's accepted, we can pass an order based on those findings, is that correct, Rebecca?
Yes, and, and don't forget your satellite offices.
Well, this will obviously cover the satellite offices, because they are courts.
Yes, sir.
Do we have any satellite offices that are not courts?
I think the only satellite offices that we can cover that are courts are the justice court.
Okay.
Okay. So, uh, going back to your motion, you'd made it, you'd included in your motion about, uh, posting the thirty ought seven at the annex.
Correct.
Is that correct?
And thirty ought six if it's deemed.
I think the only place we can post that is gonna be on the actual office of the crime victims.
Okay, yes, that would be my answer.
Linda, you, you got all that?
Sure, it's empty.
Okay. Would you like to restate your motion so we're all clear?
Right, I would move that we would designate the entire courthouse as thirty ought seven, uh, to include the, uh, courthouse annex and justice of the peace offices, which are satellite offices. And then second and third floor to be thirty ought six and thirty ought seven.
All right, and you second that motion, Mr. Pelt?
I still agree with it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one.
Judge, also, before we adjourn.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Pelt, would you like to put the, uh, annex project on the next court so we can get that going?
I would, I would.
Okay. So, we'll put that on the next agenda, uh, now Commissioner Kirkendall won't be here on the twenty-fifth, so, uh, would you like, for, we know your feelings on that, would you like for us to discuss it without you, or waiting till the next meeting?
I'd really like to be here.
Okay, so, could we put that on the first meeting in February?
First meeting in February.
Okay. Anything else before we adjourn?
I'll move it, John.
Second.
We stand adjourned.